Good morning, everyone. This is the Transportation Infrastructure Subcommittee. And we are joined by Councilwomen Stark, Gordo, and Pastor. So I call the meeting to order. First item, is there any public?
Gentlemen, there is none.
Okay. And we will move to minutes of the previous meeting. Does anyone want to make a correction, amendment, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. No further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, nay. None, none, the minutes passed unanimously. And now we'll go to consent items two through six. I believe anybody's been briefed on them. Does anyone need to call or talk about any of them?
I have one question about item two.
Okay.
I just wanted to know from staff if we're moving towards electrical in order to make our sustainability and our gas submission goals.
Madam Chair, this is Mario Panigawa. Jesus, Safety and Public Transit Director, is up at the table and can give an overview of what we're doing for electric vehicles.
Okay, perfect.
Electric buses.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. Thank you for that question. Yes, to Councilwoman Pastor's question, we have been testing electric vehicles in the Phoenix area, both us and Valley Metro, over the years to see the feasibility of implementing them as part of the fleet. We will notify the electric bus companies of this RFP. However, in the meantime, I would let you know that the testing we have done has shown that unfortunately, some of the technology is just not there yet, and that just simply has to do with the environment that we're in. The electric buses are doing well in colder climates. We expect the technology to improve over the years. We certainly are interested in implementing those in our fleet, and we have ongoing discussions with the bus manufacturers that make the electric buses, not only to see how the technology has evolved, but also to continually invite them to come test them in our environment.
Okay, that's great to hear. The only reason, well, many reasons why I'm asking, but one thing, I would ask some of the school districts who have gone to electrical, I know they're not as heavy as the buses, but I would also just ask what their challenges are, really what's great about them also.
Absolutely, Councilwoman, we can do that. I would also mention that I'm currently serving on the American Public Transportation Association's Clean Vehicle Committee, and I try to do my best to keep abreast of what's out there in terms of technology and the range of these vehicles. The range, how far they can go on a single charge, is our biggest challenge in this environment right now.
Yeah, it kind of reminds me of solar panels back in the day. You know, when solar panels first started, that was the same dynamic, and then making that investment because of the, it wasn't where it should be as it is today. So like anything, we test and we have to evolve. So, thank you, Jesus, thank you for serving.
Absolutely, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to move item two through six.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Post, nay. Sounds like it passes unanimously. We will now go to information items. Does anyone need a presentation on any of these? Okay, there are none. We will go to item 11, which is comprehensive roadway safety overview.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yeah, we talked about before, we wanted a lot more information input and judgments.
That's right, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. Here to talk about comprehensive roadway safety is a follow-up to the last meeting where the focus was pedestrian safety, and the Subcommittee wanted to broaden the discussion to a more comprehensive perspective on roadway safety overall. Keeney is here, Keeney Knudsen from Street Transportation Department, along with Brianna Velez, to give a presentation on this item.
Thank you, Mario, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. Glad to be here to share with you an overview of the Street Transportation Department's comprehensive roadway safety efforts. With me today is Brianna Velez, our Assistant Street Transportation Director. Comprehensive roadway safety is a timely topic. When we have discussed pedestrian safety with Councilmembers in the past, I've said that all it takes is one bad weekend, or a bad week, to reverse some of the positive trends we've seen with fatalities on our roadways. And unfortunately, this past weekend was a bad weekend, and as covered in the news, you might have seen that we had three pedestrian fatalities in the span of six hours, but what maybe wasn't covered in the news was that we also had vehicle collisions that resulted in at least four additional traffic-related fatalities. This is why this is such an important agenda item for our talk today. Our city is faced with many challenges, including ones related to traffic safety. More people, more growth, how do we accommodate such growth while improving the safety of our roadways? Well, today, we have the opportunity, the topic we're talking today, we had the opportunity to present this item to our Citizens Transportation Commission last week. At that meeting, we had a very lively discussion about the topic, and it became obvious that that Commission is very interested in this topic. With our presentation today, I wanted to provide an outline on what we'll be going over. First, we will be focusing on sharing some data related to roadway safety, both at the national level and also for the City of Phoenix. Next, we will share information about how we are addressing the four E's of traffic safety: evaluation, engineering, enforcement, and education. And this will include summarizing both our current and future efforts related to these topics. Finally, I would note that this item does include a potential action for the Subcommittee. We have developed a recommendation for the Subcommittee's consideration related to the development of a roadway safety action plan, and also the implementation of safety improvements on our roadways. When it comes to roadway safety, data is a key to helping us make decisions. We evaluate data, recommend improvements, and implement as we're able. The map on the screen is something that probably looks very familiar to the Subcommittee members. It's a hotspot analysis. In the past, we have shared a similar map related to hotspots for pedestrian fatalities. This map actually is a map showing our total roadway fatalities, which includes vehicles, bicyclists, and pedestrians. It has been overlaid on the map of the council districts as well. Phoenix is 520 square miles. It is large, and its needs, especially when it comes to the issues of traffic safety, are different, whether you're in southwest Phoenix, Maryville, downtown Phoenix, Arcadia, or our suburbs. We use the four E's to help guide our traffic safety efforts. Together, the four E's of traffic safety are intended to make it easier and more appealing to make good decisions as a roadway user, whether you're a pedestrian bicyclist or a vehicle driver, and encourage the right kinds of behavior to guide decision-making. But it is not foolproof. We know and understand that people will still make bad decisions, risky decisions, that can have life-altering and life-ending consequences. So before we get into the presentation, I wanted to provide a quick overview of the data and statistics that highlight the importance of roadway safety as it relates to the City of Phoenix. National trends, based on gathering, data we've gathered from the National Highway Safety Administration, show that over a three-year period from 2017 to 2019, the total fatalities on roadways. And you can see that Phoenix has the third highest number of roadway fatalities across the nation, behind only Los Angeles and Houston. Additionally, on this slide here, you can look at the national trends, but normalizing them to a per capita evaluation. In this case, it's for roadway fatalities based on 100,000 population. In this case, Phoenix does not fare much better, coming in at the sixth highest city in the country. I would note that we did additional analysis related to the number of collisions on our roadways and the number of fatalities on our roadways over the past 10 years. Collisions have been increasing over that time, approximately a 45% increase since 2010. And when you look at the data related to fatalities, we hit a high of 208 fatalities in 2018, which was a 92% increase in the number of fatalities since 2010. To provide some detail behind what the cause of these collisions, based on violations issued in city collisions over a five-year period, the top two driver behaviors are failure to yield to traffic and speeding. These two violations are factors in more than half of Phoenix collisions. You can see some of the additional behaviors include unsafe lane changes, disregarding a signal, and following too close. In our conversations with the public and with Councilmembers, one common theme has emerged recently, and that is speeding. We get asked constantly, what can we do to address speeding? I would note that some of the other, when you talk about failure, you may be questioned about what failure to yield means. That's really kind of things like left turns in front of oncoming traffic, or not yielding to pedestrians in a crosswalk. So when we move now to talk about evaluation, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Brianna Velez, who's going to take you through the balance of it.
Thank you, Keeney. Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, evaluation is a key component to roadway safety. Maricopa Association of Governments, also known as MAG, publishes an annual report for the top 100 highest-risk intersections within the MAG region, utilizing crash data from the previous five years. MAG uses a formula to score the intersections, which includes the number of crashes, and their severity, frequency, and type. The current MAG intersection list identifies 72 Phoenix intersections in the top 100, with eight Phoenix intersections in the top 10. The hotspot map shown represents all fatal and serious collisions over the last five years from 2014 through 2018, with the overlay of the council district areas. The location of the 72 intersections are represented by the green dots, and it is very clear that majority of the locations fall within hotspot areas. A critical element to improving roadway safety is the evaluation or audit of an intersection or corridor through a roadway safety assessment, also known as an RSA. From 2015 to 2019, City of Phoenix participated in 21 roadway safety assessments, which includes 15 intersections and six corridors. Of these, 14 of the RSAs included intersections listed in MAG's top 100 highest-risk intersections. These RSAs were coordinated and funded through either MAG or the Arizona Department of Transportation. Under the MAG Roadway Safety Assessment Program, cities will request the locations to be evaluated. MAG will then select and fund an independent, multidisciplinary team of experts to evaluate data, drawings, and perform field reviews in order to make recommendations on safety improvements. The recommendations from the RSAs are then presented to the city and are categorized by short-term, mid-term, and long-term improvements. Short-term improvements typically involve an existing funding program and can be addressed quickly through a work order. Examples include signing and striping changes or trimming of vegetation. Mid-term improvements also typically fall within an existing funded program but cannot be implemented as quickly. Examples include pavement resurfacing and ADA ramps. Long-term improvements typically carry substantial costs and must be addressed with a capital improvement project. Examples include reconstruction of the intersection and full signal builds. Let's take a look at 75th Avenue and Indian School Road, where a roadway safety assessment was completed in 2015 as part of a corridor evaluation of Indian School Road from 77th Avenue to 49th Avenue. This specific intersection is MAG's number-one location on its recent list of the top 100. I want to highlight some of the safety-related improvements that would be part of a project at this location. On the center circle, I've highlighted the existing signal head, which does not meet current standards. National standards now require one signal head over each lane of traffic as part of signal construction. The circle on the right highlights the signal head that controls the left-turn movement, which does not have flashing yellow arrows. Flashing yellow arrows have been proven to reduce left-turn crashes and are easier for drivers to understand. You may have seen several flashing yellow arrows around the city at newly constructed signals and signal rebuilds. The circle on the left highlights the pedestrian element. You will see that the existing signal does not have pedestrian push buttons, which is a standard with all new and rebuilt signals. All of these recommended improvements would require a full rebuild of the signal. Now let's take a look at the aerial of the same intersection. I have highlighted some additional recommended safety improvements. The upper right and lower left circle highlight areas that do not contain any street lighting, so new streetlights would be installed as part of a project at this location. The upper-left circle highlights extra roadway width and an existing bus bay that overlaps two driveways, which could be corrected as part of a project. The center circle on the northwest corner highlights an existing SRP irrigation structure that could increase cost significantly. Many intersections that recommend a full signal rebuild that have not been completed are really due to costly utility conflicts and extensive improvements beyond just the signal. The estimated cost for all of these improvements at this particular intersection is approximately $1 million. At this time, we do not have a project or funding identified to implement the recommended safety improvements. As I mentioned earlier, the 2015 roadway safety assessment was for the Indian School corridor from 77th to 49th Avenue. This includes four major signalized intersections, and the long-term recommended safety improvements were estimated to cost close to $9 million for the entire corridor. Engineering is another important element of roadway safety, as we just highlighted several of the recommended safety improvements that were identified as part of the RSA or evaluation process. There are many tools in traffic safety engineering toolbox, but not all of them may be the right tools for Phoenix. Some of the demonstrated safety features and enhancements that have been implemented in Phoenix include Hawk pedestrian signals for our most vulnerable users, new traffic signal installations and rebuilds to incorporate left-turn flashing yellow arrows, signing and striping changes, such as narrow travel lanes, buffered and protected bike lanes, and high-visibility crosswalks with added signage. Other improvements implemented with safety benefits include streetlight improvements, offset left-turn lanes to improve sight distance, and access control at driveways associated with new development. The third E of roadway safety is education. Most of the efforts thus far have focused primarily on our youth through the school safety education programs. This includes the Safe Routes to School program and the development of a pedestrian safety activity book in both English and Spanish to teach children the importance of pedestrian safety. Another education element was the development of two safety campaigns. The first one entitled Heads Up, Drive Smart, Walk Smart, Bike Smart, and the most recent being Scan the Street for Wheels and Feet. Roadway safety campaigns are an important tool to influencing the behavior of all roadway users. An example of information we can relate to drivers is through our speed feedback signs, which alert them of their speed in relation to the posted speed limit. Speed feedback signs have been primarily installed near elementary schools abutting an arterial street. The fourth and final E is enforcement. While enforcement is not a function of the Street Transportation Department, we do work very closely with our partners in the Police Department. While I will be providing an update on the enforcement component, I want to note that Commander Issit from Phoenix Police's Traffic Bureau has joined us today to answer any questions relative to enforcement. In 2020, the Police Department's Traffic Bureau underwent a significant change by expanding the traffic unit within two patrol precincts. A traffic unit squad, which includes one sergeant and nine officers, was assigned to Mountain View Precinct in April 2020 and to Maryville Estrella Mountain Precinct in September 2020. Through November 2020, these two units have responded to 53% of the collisions within the precincts. The expansion within these two precincts was accomplished without any additional sworn officers. The goal is to provide a traffic unit squad within the remaining four patrol precincts. So where do we stand today? Our current programs that we use to address traffic operations concerns, which include traffic safety elements, total about $4.7 million per year. Many of the high-benefit safety recommendations in roadway safety assessments are cost-prohibitive to implement and cost millions of dollars. In fact, the RSA for the Indian School corridor was estimated to cost at least $9 million. Phoenix has more than 70 intersections in the MAG top 100 and eight of the top 10. So when we talk about addressing roadway safety issues, it is very clear that $4.7 million is not even remotely enough to begin to address the safety concerns on our city streets. Because of limited funding, Streets is always looking for opportunities to leverage local funding by continually pursuing all federal and regional grant programs for improvements related to completed roadway safety assessments. Safety grant funding, while helpful, still is not adequate to meet the safety needs for Phoenix, and usually the implementation timeframe is long. Many cities nationwide are utilizing a process known as systemic safety planning to implement roadway safety programs. This process involves the evaluation of safety data and using the data analysis to drive prioritization and selection of safety improvement projects. The cost-benefit analysis is a way to compare the benefits of proposed safety improvements with the cost of implementing them in order to provide the maximum benefit for the funding available. With limited resources and a large need for safety improvement projects, this approach is critical to determine which projects provide the greatest safety benefit for the roadway users. To make a more focused approach to comprehensive roadway safety on our city streets, staff proposes to initiate and lead the development of a roadway safety action plan in partnership with the Phoenix Police Department. This action plan would be a 12- to 18-month community and stakeholder-driven process with the intent of understanding their priorities and developing a roadmap for implementing roadway safety programs and actions modeled on the four E's. Because the roadway safety action plan will take some time to complete, staff also requests funding to implement high-priority safety improvements that have been identified by completed roadway safety assessments and at MAG top 100 locations like 75th Avenue and Indian School Road. In addition to funding, a comprehensive roadway safety approach would also require additional staffing to effectively implement safety-focused programs.
Thank you, Brianna. Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, that brings us to the end of the presentation, but we wanted to summarize up with our requested action for you today, which is what we request Subcommittee to recommend approval of, the use of one-time $3 million in Streets T-2050 funding, combined with $3 million in general funds as one-time funding as well, and the addition of five new positions using Arizona Highway User Revenue Funds. That would be ongoing for those five positions, and that would be in order to develop the roadway safety action plan that Brianna mentioned, and also to implement those short-term recommendations for up to four completed roadway safety assessments that we've already completed as a Street Transportation Department. With that, we have any more to answer, any questions the Subcommittee may have. Thank you.
Does anyone have questions or comments? I want to thank you very much for the presentation and for the plan. I think it is a way we need to go. I do have a question. I understand that the county, MAG, is working with the cities to develop a list of needs to one proposition from the New York 400. Do you have a safety component you proposed in that?
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, so to restate the question, related to our efforts working with MAG on the extension of the Prop 400 Regional Transportation Tax, the City of Phoenix has provided a list of projects that encompass both street projects, freeway projects, and transit projects for that. I know that they're going through the process with the MAG Regional Council members to be able to look at prioritization of how those projects look across the region. I do understand they do have a safety component in there as well that's included in there as part of the projects.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Gordo? And then, Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, thank you for that. Well, my question, I guess my question for you, Keeney, is I would like to know which projects will receive funding in the high-priority roadway projects? Are there any projects in District 5 that have been designated high priority?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Gordo, members of the Subcommittee, related to those top 100 intersections and then the top eight and the top 10, or the eight of the top 10, those Phoenix intersections, a good portion of, as you can see from the hotspot map that we provided, are in District 5. We have not identified which of those projects, under the short-term improvements that we mentioned for the funding, would be, which locations those would actually be, but that's something we're going to work on in the next few weeks to be able to work through, and talking with the Councilmembers as well about how that money got made expensive, if that money gets approved.
And, yeah, because I think you and I spoke about this, I think it was, was it yesterday? All my days are starting, starting to blend together. We talked about it yesterday, and we've been talking a lot about 75th Avenue. I know that, you know, we had a big meeting with the Super Moms a little bit over a year ago. You know, we have a school there, we have a park there, we have a high school, so much activity on 75th Avenue. We have a methadone clinic, there's just a lot of different things that I think, that I think attribute to all the issues that we're seeing on 75th Avenue. I think, you know, it's one of the streets that I usually use when I'm not here at the city, so I definitely see this. And I don't understand why people love to speed on 75th Avenue, but it's like their place to like really go up and down, especially after 8 o'clock, 8 o'clock at night, there's this, there's this new taco place that's amazing, and, you know, we go there a lot, and we just see the racing up and down the streets. So definitely want to make sure what is it that we can do to help and move a lot of this forward, right? It's a little troublesome to see how all of these intersections are between, a lot of these big intersections are between Camelback and Indian School from 75th to 35th Avenue. So definitely hoping to see, also, what is it that we can do to get Glendale to help? I know that some of these intersections, you know, we are crossing with Glendale, so I'm not sure if you've had any conversations with them as well.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Gordo, and members of the Subcommittee, a couple of things there. I think the experiences you mentioned on 75th Avenue are ones that we hear across the city, and, but we do know, as I mentioned before, that we do have, and the hotspots of fatal collisions are heavily in the Maryville area as well. But I think that what we highlighted about the roadway safety action plan, that helps address what works best for each community and which area of the city for the different tools we have to be able to address it in a more comprehensive manner, to be able to address speeding issues, safety issues, pedestrian issues, collision issues. There's a lot of different ways we can do that, and so I think that roadway safety action plan will help develop that, that plan that works for all of city, but also is adaptable and flexible to the individual needs of the city. You mentioned the municipalities. A number of those 70 intersections that we talked about in the top 100 are intersections we share responsibility, or at least on the border with other cities. So yes, we do work with the other cities on improvements that, between intersections we share, and the roadways we share. And I know ones like Camelback Road, where we definitely have that shared use in there. That's something we do work with the other cities on efforts to be able to improve safety.
Thank you for that. So I think it is urgent that we, as a city, focus on creating safe streets, safer pedestrians, for cyclists, and for drivers. And as a mother of two young kids, I know how important it is for our children as well. I support and appreciate the recommendation by our Streets Department to create a roadway safety action plan. It is my hope that the plan includes robust community input, and that is something I will follow up in over the course of the plan. I mean, I think it's definitely important to try to get ideas from our neighbors, from our neighborhood leaders, our block watchers, and in our associations, to try to figure out some of these issues. So thank you so much for that presentation, Keeney and Brianna, thanks for everything you guys do.
Councilwoman Stark?
Thank you. Could the commander come up for a minute? I don't want to put him on the spot, but I have a couple of questions about enforcement.
He's on his way up, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, this is an excellent presentation. I really appreciate it. I like the four E's. Well, welcome. So, you know, the thing that I don't see a lot of anymore are officers on the motors. And, and I know you're trying to rebuild that, but I can remember a time where there would be three motorcycle officers in a row with their radars. I think you called them "whip packs" or something like that, and they really could help with enforcement. So what do we need to help you build back the motors? Because I think they're vital. We need to have some enforcement, because I know a lot of people are getting away with it, because they know there's not a lot of officers out there patrolling speed rates and whatnot.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Stark, and members of the Subcommittee, so thank you for asking about the motors. So at the peak, before, before my time as, as the commander over the Traffic Bureau, there was 160 motorcycle officers at one point. Currently, I have 56 motorcycle officers. Obviously, from the presentation, 18 of those motorcycle officers and two sergeants are assigned to the Mountain View and Maryville Estrella Precinct. So their primary focus and function is to help out the patrol division with all of the, the accidents that, that are currently happening within the city. So during the operational time that we've had from April through basically last week, the motors in, in those precincts responded to and took over 1,600 accidents of the 3,000-plus possible. So we're, we're definitely trying to continue to fill the seats of the motor, the motorcycle officers, you know, that can obviously help with the enforcement and with the, you know, the traffic issues that we're facing in the city that, I mean, we say in the Traffic Bureau that traffic affects everybody, because it does. that traffic affects everybody, because it does. Everybody sees people speeding, everybody, I mean, we've, we've had the significant amount of fatalities as discussed by Director Knutson. So the thing that we need the most at the moment is equipment. We need motorcycles, because we can't have motorcycle officers without motorcycles. So we're currently working on trying to get some supplemental funding from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. Director Gutierrez at GOHS has been gracious enough to supplement us with, with other needs, and so we're continuing to try to, to fill that need with, with those funds that, that he's been able to give us.
Thank you. And then as a follow-up, Councilwoman, you brought up a good point about the block watches. Is there a way that the block watches can get involved in enforcement? I know they're, they're not peace officers, but is there a way they can help you?
Madam Chair, and Councilwoman Stark, members of the Subcommittee, so we, we actually have a traffic hotline that many people call. I believe last year, we received over 1,000 complaints on that traffic hotline, that then the Traffic Education Safety Squad goes out, and they will address each one of those complaints. In addition, they will also reach out to the enforcement squads within the Traffic Bureau, and they will go and supplement those, those traffic complaints. The more input and the more help that we can get from the community is always beneficial. We, we obviously can't be everywhere at every time, and so between the block watches, between the citizens who are calling in on the traffic complaints, and, you know, we, we also are, you know, receive the complaints from your respective council offices that, that we also handle, and, you know, we, we really try to handle each one of those complaints immediately so that we can provide the community the, you know, the response that they're looking for in terms of enforcement.
And I appreciate that, and I know you helped us out on 7th Street, between Greenway and Thunderbird, we, you guys actually caught someone clocking in at 70 miles an hour on 7th Street. But I, I, I do want to help you, if we need to look for some additional equipment, I think we need to do that. I know that, again, I think people are taking advantage of the fact that we don't have the robust motors that we used to have, and they know they can get away with it. So thank you so much. I appreciate that. And then I just have one other quick question for Kinney, you know, be finished.
I have a question for the Commander, if he could wait.
Oh, okay, then why don't you go ahead? Or do you want me to?
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Commander, you said at peak, 160 motor officers. When was peak? What year?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, and members of the Subcommittee, I believe that was around 2007, 2008.
Okay.
It was well before my time as a Commander. I think I was still an officer at that point, so, but to the point that Councilwoman Stark made, I remember as an officer, you couldn't turn a corner without seeing a motorcycle officer, so.
That's exactly what I was just going to say, because I always knew where a motorcycle officer was on 7th Avenue at peak in the morning or in the evening because of the, the lanes. And so I witnessed, maybe a couple of days ago, of possible, several crashes. Luckily, they were figuring it out on the reverse lanes, that they were, that the reverse lanes kicked in. It would have been nice to have a motorcycle officer there to, to educate as to, I think people have forgotten during COVID, educate when the hours go, kick in, and when they, when reverse lanes kick in, but, yeah, and that, that makes sense to me now, because I've been wondering where, where, where have they been? But we, we dropped down to 56, and 18 have now, in all reality, there's 38, because 18 are, are dedicated to, to Estrella, and is it Mountain View?
Yes, yes, it is. And just, just to give you an idea, you know, not to say that, that people, you know, drivers aren't being cited for civil citations, because they are, but my motors are so busy that, that the majority of enforcement, especially when it comes to speeding, is for, for criminal speed, for criminal speed. So that's 21 miles per hour and above. So they're, they're basically, when, when they go out and they're trying to do these enforcement, you know, opportunities, they're really spending their time writing the citations for people that are, that are going 21 miles per hour above the speed limit.
Thank you.
Wow. And then I just, if I could do a follow-up to Kinney, I, my question is, and I, I'm so glad that Councilwoman Pastor brought this up, but we do have roadway systems that are unique, like the reverse lanes. In your humble opinion, do you think we need better signage? I, I, I was in Nashville a couple of years ago on vacation, and they have reverse lanes, but they had these arrows, they were either red, or, well, they were crosses, they were either red or they were green. And it, it, I thought that was pretty convenient, and, and, so are you looking at solutions like that as well?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Stark, members of the Subcommittee, yes, the, glad you brought up the reverse lanes, Councilwoman Pastor brought them up, but the, we have a couple of different projects we're working on, and it becomes a funding issue, because that, those two corridors, 7th Avenue and 7th Street, we did submit those, I think, for our Prop 400 extension list, but part of that is to, one thing is to be able to make sure that we're doing a job, those, those reverse lane structures and things like that have been there for decades, so we want to make sure we're protecting and improving on those, but also part of that is in taking advantage of new technology to do exactly what you're talking about, to make those signage and more clear and visible to people using it, so it, it, it is something that becomes safer as a necessary part of our transportation network to be able to accommodate some of the traffic we've got.
Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Do we have any public calls?
Chairwoman, we don't on this side, and we only do on 14 and 15.
Chairwoman, I have another question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Kinney, so I, it's my understanding that the federal bill grant is being used to address the safety issues on, which I think is super exciting on, on 35th Avenue, right?
Yes, Madam Chair, Councilwoman Guardado, members of the Subcommittee, the bill grant that we have is for 35th Avenue from Interstate 10 to Camelback Road, and to give you some numbers related to that, we received a $17.5 million grant from the federal government, but that is combined with $7.5 million of local money, so it's a total of $25 million.
Well, that's exciting. And are there, and then I also understand that the Road for Zero, the Road for Zero Initiative is a good option for funding. Have we applied for that, or are we going to?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Guardado, members of the Subcommittee, I'm not aware of that, and I'll, I'll check with my staff on that to see if that's something we've been investigating, if it's applicable or something we're eligible for in, in Phoenix.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's called Road to Zero.
Thank you.
So if we can investigate that, I hear that they, they give funding for, for these issues that we're talking about, and, and I understand that we're, you know, we, we need a lot of money in order, in order to deal with some of these issues, so I would, it'd be great if someone could just investigate, what are some of these other grants that we could be applying for, so we can get working on some of this stuff. Thank you.
So, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
So, Kinney, I enjoyed the presentation as, as it's a comprehensive way of looking at our streets and roadway, but I also just want to make sure, in looking at our comprehensive plan, that there's equity across all districts, and, and making sure that safety is going across all districts. I had a unique comment, and I didn't know how to respond to it. And the comment was, how come east, all the streets east of Central are well-maintained and paved, and when there's an issue, it gets solved quickly, but anything west of Central, it's, it takes longer, and it's more of a, of a fight and a complaint? And I just didn't know how to answer that, and I said, I just kind of said, do you have evidence? And they said, yeah, we tested it. And so I just want to make sure there's equity happening across the city, and that all our roads are getting paved. That's just my comment, and I think this plan will help in, in doing that.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor and members of the Subcommittee, a couple of things on that I want to mention. A couple of things we've done recently in, in recent years is we have developed a universal inspector program, where we have an inspector that's signed to two, each, to two council districts, so we actually have street transportation staff going out and looking at paving items, sidewalk items, landscaping, signing, striping, street lighting, all those different things that might be issues for the members of the public, and maybe they call us, maybe they don't, and we realize that there are some communities, areas of the city, where people will call six minutes after something breaks or something isn't working. We also know there's communities where we won't hear for six years if something is in that situation, so we wanted to be the eyes and ears of our community, and so those, what those universal inspectors are tasked with doing, is going out there and having those eyes of the community. I would also mention with, that comes to the paving program, at least, you know, since, since my involvement with it, one thing we've been working on significantly is to make sure that the allocation of those paving projects is equitable across the council districts and across the areas of need when it comes to the needs of the roadway, and that's objective criteria, not subjective, that can lead to favoritism and equity issues.
Thank you for doing that.
Does anyone have any further questions, Congress? We have a motion to recommend the council's staff's recommendation.
I move the comprehensive roadway safety plan.
Second, and can I add a, add just a comment to that? I, I, I think we need to add that we shall seek additional funding for the motor division of the police department for equipment. So I guess at this point, it would just be investigating, and then if they come up with ways that we can fund it, I would be supportive of that, so, is that okay, Maker of the Motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Sounds like it's unanimous, so thank you. Thank you, Kinney, and the Commander, and everyone who participated. Very good, thank you. We will now go, we're going to skip item 12 and take it out of order, we're going to do item 13 next.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Item 13 is an update on the solid waste infrastructure and financial plan, and here to present are Ginger Spencer, Public Works Director, along with Joe Judice, Assistant Public Works Director, and Brandy Barrett, Deputy Public Works Director. I'll turn it over to Ginger now.
Thank you, Mario. Good morning, Vice Mayor Williams and members of the Subcommittee. Thank you for this opportunity to come and give you an update on our solid waste infrastructure and financial plan. As we approach the one-year mark of the rate increase that was approved by Mayor and Council last February, we wanted to just come in and provide an update on how we're doing. We're going to provide you with an update on how we're tracking on our revenues, our expenditures, and also take a look at our five-year CIP. Alrighty, so February 11th is a date that I won't forget, and that was the date where Mayor and City Council took action to approve the rate increase for the solid waste fund after 11-year stint of it staying, remaining the same. I want to thank the Mayor and City Council for your leadership and action, because we didn't know what was going to, what we would experience in 2020. But on February 11th, just to refresh everyone's memory, City Council approved a rate increase, and it was over a two-phase process. So in April of 2020 last year, our rate went from $26.80, it increased by $3.75 to $30.55. And then the second phase went into effect just this year in January last month, where it increased another $3.25, bringing our monthly residential rate to $33.80. And then also, looking out for future years, the solid waste rate will increase by 2% inflationary factor, starting in January 2022, that will go through January 2026. That 2% inflationary factor is about, about 68 cents, 70 cents on the dollar. So the reason that this date of February 11th is so important, because on March 11th, I, in March, the following month, I was sending out my first notice to our solid waste and public works employees about COVID-19. Just like all city operations, our solid waste side was hit heavily as well by COVID-19, but I want you to know, our folks rose to the occasion. On the solid waste side, what we experienced was a 20% increase in trash, recycling, and bulk trash on average. So when the stay-at-home orders were put into place, individuals were now staying at home, and normally trash or recycling that they would get rid of at the workplace or at restaurants were now all being picked up by our drivers. Additionally, with a lot of folks being at home as well during COVID-19, a lot of individuals were doing home projects, and so Home Depot and Lowe's were very busy, and so were our bulk trash operators. But I want you to know, this actually increased the overtime that our drivers and employees had to work. Some days, we had to work six and seven days a week just to keep up. There were evenings where our employees worked till 6:00 and 7:00 PM, because the garbage needed to be picked up, where they normally would finish their day around 2:30 PM. We also worked with the union to get support from Launa Local 777, Unit 1, that we could basically get a contractor, a vendor, to help us with container delivery, so we could keep up that way. And then also, at the end of the day, we actually had to create a sign, a little note card that said, sorry for the delay, but we're on our way, just to let our residents know that we heard them, but we were experiencing a significant increase, and we were doing everything we could to keep up. So on the slide that you see there, we heard from our residents, we got so much support from our residents for our drivers, they would put signs out on the street and on containers that said, thank you, we see you, thank you essential worker, and so that really helped with the morale for our employees. And so I want to definitely thank again the Mayor and City Council for your leadership and action. I want to acknowledge the original members of our solid waste rate advisory committee who also made this recommendation, thank our residents for their continued support, and then also just our staff for their ongoing dedication. Because of all of this, we were, we were able to weather the storm. When we talk about COVID-19, our, the impact from a financial standpoint was about $4 million increase to our budget that would be over last fiscal year and projected for this fiscal year. We were able to work with city management, budget and research, and our CFO, and of course with the support of Mayor and City Council, to get support in coronavirus relief funds to offset half of those costs. And so we just continue to work extra hard to be conservative. So I also want to acknowledge Felisa Washington Smith, Brandy Barrett, and our fiscal team for their work on the solid waste performer, and then definitely Joe Judice and the members of our solid waste management team and all of our solid waste employees. Lastly, what I would say is, I also have to acknowledge facilities and fleet staff, because as long as the city is open and running, public works is working. uh because as long as the city is open and running, uh public works is working. And so they made sure to keep our fleet maintained uh as well as to make sure that our facilities were safe for our our operators. Lastly, what I will say before I turn it over to Brandy is um also last year, we uh, we were to achieve a forty percent diversion um for our Reimagine Phoenix campaign, campaign. That's diversion from the landfill by December thirty-first, 2020. I want you to know that during the campaign, we hit a peak of thirty-six percent diversion in eighteen nineteen, exceeding the national average. But because of the impact of COVID with everything increasing, we finished out uh the campaign at thirty-four percent. When you look at it on a national average, um the national average peaked at thirty-five percent. Uh but then it finished out at thirty-two percent nationwide. Um so with that, uh I will turn it over to Brandy. And again, we've stabilized the fund thanks to the action of mayor and council. Uh we were able to renegotiate contracts we have in place to continue our operations. We are conservative in our spending. We pivoted throughout COVID-19 and we continue to be good stewards um of our rate payers uh dollars. So Brandy, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ginger. Vice Mayor Williams, members of the subcommittee. Five-year financial plans for the city's solid waste utility reflect the capital, infrastructure requirements, operating expenditures, and financial requirements of solid waste services. These plans provide for repair, replacement, and development of infrastructure that is necessary to ensure that our landfills, transfer stations, and material recovery facilities meet regulatory and service requirements. They provide all resources needed by Public Works to continue to provide reliable solid waste refuse and recycling services to Phoenix residents. And they also ensure a reliable fleet of equipment to provide effective collection services. Adopted revenue budget for the current fiscal year, 2021, is one hundred and seventy-four point eight million dollars. The three largest revenue generators for the solid waste program include monthly fees that are charged for residential household service. Uh this, as you can see, at ninety-one percent is our largest source of revenue. Disposal fees charged at the transfer stations and landfill represent about five point seven percent of revenue, and the sale of recycled materials. In addition, there is a small percentage of other revenues, such as interest earnings and surplus vehicle sales, that makes up the remaining one point four percent. As forecasted in the financial plan for fiscal year 2125, revenue generated from the rates already approved by city council will provide for the staffing, equipment, and capital needs of the solid waste utility to ensure all services remain. Currently, residential revenue is in line with the forecast, projected at one hundred and fifty-eight point four million for the current fiscal year. As you can see, that's about twenty point six million higher than prior fiscal year actuals. Disposal fee revenue at our two transfer stations is projected at eleven point nine million for fiscal year 2021. And this is an increase of two point five million over prior fiscal year actuals. This increase is due to the gate rate change as well as growth in customer use of our transfer stations. Finally, sale of recyclables revenue is projected at approximately six point eight million for the current fiscal year. And that is an increase of about two point eight million over the prior fiscal year. That's attributable to improved market prices that we're seeing for our commodities, particularly cardboard and paper, coupled with growth in recycling tonnage. Our current rates support the operating budget, capital infrastructure, vehicle replacement, debt service requirements of solid waste, as well as the twenty-five million dollar minimum operating reserve, which is critical to protect bond rating and provide for financial resiliency. Operating expenditures for fiscal year 2021, the current fiscal year, are budgeted at a hundred and fifty-eight point nine million dollars. Of this total, approximately eighty-seven percent of expenditures are for operations and maintenance, and thirteen percent is for vehicles. However, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, Solid Waste is currently projecting to spend one hundred and sixty point six million to address the high increased volume of tonnage for residential refuse, recycle, and bulk trash. The additional expenditures will be offset, as Ginger mentioned, by coronavirus release, coronavirus relief funds in addition to increased revenue. Of note, the solid waste utility is increasing its contribution to the city's Project Assist Utility Assistance Program from seventy thousand dollars a year for the past three years to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the current fiscal year. Contributions will further increase to three hundred and sixty thousand dollars next fiscal year. As you may be aware, the water, wastewater, and solid waste utilities all contribute proportionately to Project Assist, which is really designed to assist City of Phoenix residents in crisis situations by providing utility financial assistance for their city services bill. I'm now pleased to turn the presentation over to Assistant Public Works Director over Solid Waste Utility, Joe Judice.
Thank you, Brandy. Good morning, Vice Mayor, members of the subcommittee. So our fleet uh continues to be a critical element of our asset replacement schedule. And much like, I always use this analogy, but much like a water utility is dependent on its pipes to deliver service, we're dependent on trucks to deliver our service. So it is critical for us to maintain our fleet assets. A fleet broken down in the shop, a truck broken down in the shop is of no value to us. Uh when we started this process with the Citizen Advisory Committee back in October of 2018, we had about thirty-one percent of our fleet that was in excellent or good condition. And I'm pleased to report that uh as of April of this year, we will have about sixty-six percent of our fleet in that excellent or good condition. So we've made, and, and I wanted to mention as well, um we're very mindful of spending resources effectively. So we've been able to supplement some of our fleet replacement with a few DARA grants. So these are grants from the Environmental Protection Agency that have helped us both invest in sustainable fleet assets, but also to be able to replace some of our trucks with natural gas vehicles. In terms of our capital improvement program, other than our fleet assets, we essentially are spending our five-year CIP with our transfer stations and materials recovery facilities representing about half of the budgeted spending over the next five years. The active landfill at State Route eighty-five is about forty percent. And then our closed landfills represent the remaining expenditures. In terms of the capital improvement program, the types of investments we make, um we have over five hundred thousand customers visiting our transfer stations each and every year. It's critical for us to maintain those roadways um and those uh tipping floors, et cetera. So the building envelope and investing in those buildings are part of those capital improvements, as well as the materials recovery facilities. At the landfill, we need to um excavate and line new cells and install all the right environmental control systems. And then our closed landfills, it's a lot of environmental control systems. Landfill gas and groundwater monitoring are critical, as well as other environmental engineered controls uh to ensure that we're protecting public health in everything we do in our waste management practices. And then of course, there's equipment replacement. And the, the most significant project we have planned in the five-year CIP is the Twenty-seventh Avenue Materials Recovery Facility. Um it is at end of useful life and it is being evaluated now for equipment replacement and we'll be coming forward with some recommendations on that. And then we did not forget that uh you had asked us to look at some other things and we are continuing to review those and plan to come back in the fall. Uh some of those other things are um the rate for the smaller sixty-gallon container. So we do have a option for residents to choose a smaller container and pay a smaller fee. Um you asked us to take a look at whether that fee could be potentially lower, um creating a greater gap between the standard rate and the smaller fee rate. So that is still under review. Uh we're also looking at the rates that we have for people who request additional containers, whether it's a ninety-gallon container, the normal container for their home, or whether it's for an additional alley container. So we'll have those under review and some recommendations. Um the consultant had done some work for us, but we did not discuss it uh related to the curbside green organics collection program. So we'll come forward with some recommendations there. And then lastly, uh the bulk trash set-out schedule is something that um has been a concern. Your constituents call your offices occasionally with concerns about the length of time that bulk trash is allowed to be set out before we are able to come and pick it up. So we wanna take a look at what are the best practices and recommendations related to that. And with that, I'm gonna turn it back to Ginger.
Okay. Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Brandy. Um so just two other quick examples that I'll give um of what our solid waste team was able to accomplish. So because of your support of the um investment that we made at our North Gateway Transfer Station, uh we were able to increase capacity there, incre- increase um, improve the quality of the recyclable materials that we're selling through North Gateway. And so we made the decision to take Twenty-seventh Avenue offline. Um we are, we have a machine that will allow us to just basically process the recyclables and send it up to North Gateway now that we have that capacity. Uh and then anything that is true contamination, it goes to the landfill. Um so that was an efficiency that was made there. In addition, with the Household Hazardous Waste Program, um because we would normally get five hundred, seven hundred people a weekend, we had to pivot there. And what we did was we offered a drop-off program for individuals with their paint and batteries and electronic waste. Um and so, but that program was not convenient. You would have to go to three different locations across the city to drop off those items. So we uh contacted other cities, we looked for best practices, and, and council recently approved us to offer a curbside collection program for HHW. And so that kicked off this month and we already had eight hundred and fifty requests uh for the Household Hazardous Waste Program. So again, that is our update for today and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Mayor, I mean, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. Um I just wanna take a moment to, to thank Public Works um for everything they've done, especially during um this pandemic. I know there were a lot of neighborhoods begging for additional containers because they were staying at home and they, there was a lot more trash and a lot more recyclables. And Ginger and her staff stepped up and, and did a remarkable job. And I was so happy to see those pictures of all the thank yous from uh residents in the City of Phoenix. That was very touching. And I, I gotta tell you though, it starts with you, Ginger. Um you really do care. You're all about customer service. So thank you and thank your staff. You're doing a terrific job. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Me.
Mayor.
Oh.
Vice Mayor.
Pastor.
Um Ginger, when you said items under review, um I just wanna mentally prepare myself, as you know how this goes. I saw a rate for smaller sixty-gallon containers. If I'm reading this right, a rate for additional regular ninety-gallon, is that for future rate hike?
Yes. So um Vice Mayor Williams and, and members of the subcommittee, um and also Councilwoman Stark, let me say thank you for um your comments and acknowledgements. And the, really truly, the credit goes to our team. We have some of the most dedicated, uh hardworking employees. And so um I love our, I love Public Works and I love our employees. So thank you for acknowledging our team. Councilwoman Pastor, to your question. So the items under review, these were items that came up when we presented on February eleventh to city council, where council members asked us to continue to look into this. So for example, the sixty-gallon container, right now, uh you can get a smaller container for three, and save three dollars a month. And so the question is, is should it continue to be three dollars? Uh should it be less? Should it be more? So that's one of the things that we're looking at as well. Um and then again, the three hundred gallon container, similar thing. The, these rates though, we would come back to council uh to take action. But right now, we, our plan is not to increase the rate. So I do wanna be clear on that. Um it took a lot of time and effort and leadership to get us to this point. Um so we are set for the next five years. So we are not looking at any increases um to our residents. And so it would be just basically trying to look at it to see if we can create additional savings uh working within our budget and being able to cover our expenditures.
Okay, got it. I just was, I just, you know how I mentally have to prepare for this and gradually start the process to begin the conversation. So thank you for that. Uh I also want to say that you are correct, that you do have dedicated employees. A lot of those uh men and women, but a lot, the, it's mainly the men that I usually sit with them on a Friday night or Saturday night and I know what's happening in the, in that area. Uh one of the, one of the things that I keep hearing repeatedly is the maintenance of our trucks. And uh the fact that they're uh expiring, that we're, we keep uh, we're, we have the ability to keep them alive, uh but that we need new equipment. Um and so I'm not sure where we are on a plan for rolling in new equipment for them. But that seems to be the same conversation that I have uh every time and, and then we bounce onto other conversations. But uh you do have a dedicated staff. They do wanna serve our community. And uh I believe that your area is definitely a customer service-driven area. So thank you for that.
Vice Mayor Williams, Councilwoman Pastor, and members of the subcommittee, thank you for that. Yes, I wish I could call all my employees out by name, but we'd be here for a while. Um so thank you for that acknowledgement. Um in regards to vehicle maintenance, so the one slide that we showed on our fleet asset replacement, um basically, a year ago, it would have been reversed. You would have seen sixty-six percent of our fleet that was aging and due for replacement. And then um, you know, only thirty-one percent being in good or fair condition. And so that is a serious concern of ours. We need our trucks to be able to pick up trash and to conduct business. The, the other thing that um because of the action of mayor and council, um we are also looking to purchase additional vehicles, supplemental vehicles, because of growth in the valley. So the numbers that you, that we presented today, that was just for replacement vehicles. Um we actually have a meeting with our CFO. We just wanted to make sure that we were managing our budget wisely uh before we went out and purchased any uh new supplemental trucks. Um and just making sure that we were able to cover that. So we actually have a meeting with our CFO this week. Um but Joe, I don't know if there's anything else that you'd like to add to the vehicle discussion?
Thank you, Ginger, uh Councilwoman Pastor. Uh the, the only thing I would add, cause I think Ginger covered it very well, is that uh it is very true that uh we had an aging fleet a couple of years ago, uh even into last year. And that uh was a concern for our employees and it was a concern for us. And the action that you all took uh has helped us to begin to remedy that. And I think we're well on our way to addressing that. We've got a wonderful fleet department here in Public Works as well, and our mechanics will do a wonderful job taking care of those trucks. So um the, those investments are coming and they will bear fruit. And I hope that um the, the drivers will recognize that as well. Thank you.
Oh, they will. But here's a happy dance for me and all the employees for that. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Chairwoman, yes, me.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, well, thank you, thank you. Um so I also wanna, wanna thank the Public Works team. Um Ginger, thank you so much um for, you know, for rolling up your sleeves with us as you, you know, I was new on council when you came in and said that we needed to do a rate increase. Um and I just thought that you wanted to kill me, right, when, when you said that we needed to do that. But I really, I really appreciated the fact um that you and your team definitely worked very closely um with, with all of us um in terms of District Five. I, I appreciate the team. Um everyone, you know, Jesse, all the guys that came out with us on the tour. And we toured those alleys and we talked about all the different cleanups that we had to get done. Um in terms of what's been happening in the last year, I know that I've put in a lot of requests for more, um for more trash pickup or maybe more, you know, mo- we needed more trash cans out, out in the district and I, and I, and I feel that you guys take that, you know, very seriously and always try to work with us to try to figure out better solutions for our constituents. And then also with, with the workers. I, I definitely love and love to see how is it that you guys have been working together with the union to try to figure stuff out and to, you know, get, get the work done. I think I, I really appreciate um everything that, everything that you guys do every day. And I, and I think the city and all of us are very thankful and lucky um to be able to have you, Ginger, as our director. So thank you so much for everything you guys do. Thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Thank you. And may I also say thank you, um Councilwoman Guardado. Um you actually brought that to our attention, um that we needed to put out more containers, that our old model wasn't working anymore. And it wasn't that people were actually doing illegal dumping, but because they were home, they had more. they had more trash, and so they needed more containers in the alleys. So thank you for working with us, and you're correct, Jesse Duarte, one of our deputy directors, and his team came out and stepped up and came up with that solution, working with Joe Giadis. So thank you.
Ginger, I want to thank you too. I think you have one of the most efficient, well-organized departments in the city. You have outstanding staff, you work very closely, you have apprenticeship programs, always creative, coming up with something new to help not only meet all of our goals, but to make this city better. You are always very focused on customer service, and I just want to know, want you to know that you are sincerely appreciated for your leadership, your style, and for all your employees and your training you have done. And you make us proud, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Williams, and happy to lead our department. And again, we love Public Works, and thank you all for your support. Thank you.
Now I believe we go back to item 13, is that correct, Maria?
Item 12 is the Water Services CIP Alternatives.
Oh, that's the one with that. I just wrote 13 next to 12. Thank you.
We're here to present our Karen Peters, Deputy City Manager, along with Eric Froberg, Interim Water Services Director, and Denise Olson, Chief Financial Officer.
Welcome, and I thank you. To me, this is a big concern when I keep reading the papers and hearing the reports of a continued and deepening drought, so thank you.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, members of the Subcommittee, and thank you for having us here today. We are here to follow up on our discussion at the last Subcommittee meeting regarding proposed water rates and the impact of those on the capital improvement program. And so we want to talk to you about that today. Joining me are our Chief Financial Officer Denise Olson and our Interim Water Services Director Eric Froberg. And we will hopefully be brief, as this has been a good long meeting, and more to come. So again, as I said, we are here to follow up regarding some of the issues that were raised when we were before you last time. And so what we'll be doing this morning is talking about some of the issues related to customer assistance and the affordability of our water services. Denise will talk a little bit more about the financial forecasts and the rate alternatives that we discussed last time. And then Eric will talk about the impacts of those rate alternatives on our capital improvement program and the public outreach efforts that we're engaged in right now regarding the proposed increase. So we are proposing a water increase, water rate increase spread out over a two-year period, staying the course with the financial plan that we talked about back in 2018. And that rate change would provide funding for the resources needed to invest in rehabilitation and replacement of water pipes, treatment plants, pumps, reservoirs, and wells that ensure reliable delivery of the city's drinking water. First, I want to just talk briefly about the affordability of water services. This chart, while you might not be able to read all of it at home, shows the water rates comparison in Valley cities. And you'll see that we rate favorably in that average water charge on the average bill. The cities that are more expensive than us are Mesa, Peoria, Glendale, and Scottsdale. So we do compare favorably there. When you combine water with wastewater rates, we still are relatively favorable and affordable relative to our neighbors. Then looking broadly across the Southwest, we are much, much more favorable, and indeed are one of the least expensive water rates in the country. And that is true also when you combine water and wastewater rates. So we are among the most affordable in the United States, but of course, we know that our residents and our customers are suffering as a result of the pandemic, and so we have thought hard about ways to help as much as we possibly can during this unprecedented time. We did hear a little bit last time about, or last time about Project Assist, and then our solid waste colleagues talked about Project Assist as well. This is a program for customers that have trouble paying their city service bill. They can apply for and get a credit if eligibility criteria are met. That program is managed by the Human Services Department at no cost to the Water Services Department, and is funded from contributions with, from customers, the water and wastewater utilities, and as you heard, the solid waste utility. Funding from customers varies over time, but generally falls within the range of 100,000 per year. In addition, this year, because of the pandemic and the impact on customers, the council was very generous and helped us out with a general fund allocation, at one time $2 million to Project Assist to augment that assistance in conjunction with increased delinquency during this pandemic. I'm very pleased to report that that money is getting out the door to customers. As of yesterday, I believe we were well over $1.2 million of the $2 million that had been distributed to over 2,100 customers. So we really want to thank you, the mayor and council, for that leadership and innovative approach to helping our customers. It is getting out there, and it is very much appreciated. As we go forward, in conjunction with the rate conversation that we're having, we are in Water Services is exploring enhancements to the existing Project Assist, potentially increasing the contribution and maybe some other, other changes to enhance that service. And then just briefly, as you know, our Water Rate Advisory Committee did some analysis regarding the affordability of our water rates, and made some recommendations that ultimately were adopted by the City Council in connection with our Water Equity Program. We did establish a pilot program for flow restriction in lieu of shut offs, but that has been delayed or postponed during the pandemic. We are not implementing flow restrictors at this time, but in the future, during the summer months, in lieu of cutoff, that is a possibility that we'll, we'll be looking at again. As I said, the council approved code changes that allow for late fees to halt after services turned off and other similar changes to help our customers. In addition, we had CARES Act allocation, and we did work to get other assistance out for paying city service bills due to COVID-19. So we are working hard to help our customers. It's very important to us that they maintain sanitation during this very difficult time, of course, but that water is essential to quality of life, and we want everyone to continue to have access to it. So I'm going to ask our CFO Denise Olson to go then through the financial forecasts and rate alternatives again that we discussed last time.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee. Just want to quickly refresh your memories on what we're proposing here in terms of rate increases and what the financial plans are showing us. As a reminder, every single year, the Finance Department works with the Water Department to develop financial forecasts that basically complement the Water Department's needs to provide safe and reliable services for both water and wastewater to their citizens. We also want to make sure with these financial forecasts that we are keeping our rates as low as possible. However, we also need to maintain our AAA bond ratings on these enterprise funds so that we can ensure very low cost when it comes to doing financing for these infrastructure intensive businesses going into the future. Starting off with the wastewater financial plan, as you remember, the five-year forecast is very, very strong. We are anticipating no rate increases through 2025. However, I do want to note that the Water Department is in the process of assessing the capital improvement program, especially in the northern area of the city. Those results will be in next year's financial forecast, and so we may see rate increases past 2024 timeframe. Moving on to the water financial plan, when we last presented this to you, it was in 2018. At that point in time, the council approved two rate increases at 6% for 2019 and 2020. And in that financial plan, we also showed 3.5% rate increases in the future years. Recently, when we did this financial plan, we took into consideration the pandemic and proposed a 0% for fiscal year '21 and a 6.5% in '22 with 3.5% in out years. We were able to reduce the rate increase a little bit compared to the original forecast due to Water Department efficiencies. The council then asked us to look at two options. Option two proposes a 3% rate increase for October of '21 and a 3.5% for October, for March of '22. This proposal actually allows us to phase in the 6.5% rate increase so that it's not such a rate shock to our customers. But I do want to point out that this option also shows 3.5% increases in the future. However, we're only asking for council to approve the first two years. Option three is an analysis that shows a 0% rate increase, and then 3.5 rate increases in future years. This one does have some impact, significant impacts, to the capital improvement program, which I will now turn over to Eric so that he can give you more details on the CIP and what the impacts of these options are.
Thank you, Denise. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee. One thing that we wanted to, before I get into the actual impacts of each of those or how each of those would impact the CIP, I thought it was important to kind of frame and provide a basis of why we ask for rate increases over time, and sometimes the reasons are different. This one is primarily for aging infrastructure. The graph that is shown here shows basically how the city of Phoenix grew up, at least on the water utility side, in that in the decades of the 50s, 60s, and 70s, you can see the miles of pipeline that were installed by decade. So in the 1950s, you know, you had 600 miles of pipeline installed, followed by another 800 miles of pipeline, and then an astronomical 14 or almost 1600, excuse me, 1600 miles in the 1970s. Those 3,000 miles of pipeline, I kind of use the analogy when we're out in the public talking is, you know, we bought the, we bought a car, you know, and just in the simplest of terms, we bought a car, and we've been using that car, and now it's time to kind of replace the tires on that car. It's, things wear out. Pipelines, when we design them, have a life expectancy of around 75 years. So if you take the 1950s, those 600 miles, and we fast forward 70 years, that puts us in the timeframe now where it's time to replace those tires or those pipelines. So if we look at then the cost to replace the pipelines, of course, this closely mirrors the graph that was shown before. And one thing to note here is on the left-hand side is the numbers there, whilst small in text, they are large in value. Those are in billions of dollars. And if we take the little, the graph there on the furthest on the left-hand side, the 2021 to the 2030, those are the pipelines that we're looking to replace that were installed in the 1950s. So you can see that's $750 million or so, but you can see as time goes on, each of the, it closely mirrors what was shown as what was installed in the decades previous. So now specifically to the options of, that we were, that we looked at and how they would impact the CIP. Option one, the 0% in 2021 and the 6.5% in 2022. As Denise mentioned, this was an option that we had brought in December. We had talked with the council offices, and at that time, that there would be a potential $100 million of projects that would be delayed 18 months, just based on when the revenue would actually be realized. Those $100 million in projects are primarily categorized in these four categories here, water main replacements, concrete reservoirs, rehabilitation, steel tank rehabilitations, and booster pump sites. Option two, again, this one closely matches the scenario or the program that council had seen before. This one does fully fund the capital improvement program, and they would move forward in generally business as usual. This is the one that follows along with the program that we had currently had seen. Option three, this is the one that has the most impact to the capital improvement fund. This would, the 0% in 2021 and then the 3.5% in '22 does not provide enough revenue to fund the CIP. We would become a very reactive, on the Water Services side, we'd become very reactive on the capital side and only be able to address the emergency repairs and those types of things. We could not be proactive in going out and replacing, again, back to the car analogy, replacing the tires on the car. This, one thing to note here though, is, and we do get questions about this when we're out doing the public meetings, this would not impact the drought infrastructure program. That was funded through previous council action and would not be impacted by this. So we wanted to provide some context of what does that mean, that the five-year CIP is not funded? So under this scenario, the next handful of slides show the things that would not be funded and that we would have to delay indefinitely. The first one shows, lists that there are 18 water treatment rehabilitation programs or projects to the tune of $176 million that would not be able to move forward. The next one, water main replacement programs, 66 of those projects of around $325 million would not currently have the funding under option three. Booster pump stations and water storage, again, another 12 projects or programs for $145 million would not be able to go forward under option three. Process controls and efficiencies, 13 projects, again, another $55 million. Another very important one on the water resources side is under option three, the Colorado River Resiliency Fund for $77 million would not be funded. This is the fund that allows us to purchase water and store it for future use. We would have to halt that program until such time that the revenues could allow us to move forward. We had a few pictures here of what the impacts are to the program, or to the Water Services Department and to the traveling public, or just to the public. When we have these old tires, we'll call them, or pipes, and we have water main breaks, things like this happen. We have, roadways are shut down, we have a photo here of a bus falling in a sinkhole, you know, bridges potentially in this case could lose some stability of being washed out and those types of things. So we want to make sure that we are as proactive as we can and moving forward to replace the water mains before these types of things happen. Just a reminder, there is this site here, waterworks phoenix.gov, which was created at the request of council for the public and council to be able to see where, to increase transparency on where the water or where the money is spent within the CIP. Very briefly here, a timeline, many of these things have already happened or will be happening here soon. Really, the next touch point for council after today, while we are out, and I'll talk a little bit about the public involvement that they're doing, but really for council, will be a hearing and a potential council adoption in the middle of March. So what is the, what would a 6.5% rate increase over two years mean to the average customer? Based on the analysis that we've done, for an average customer, that would raise the monthly bill approximately $2.40 when the total 6.5% is applied, or the equivalent of eight cents a day. Real quick on the public outreach efforts, so we've done, we've planned for, and we are currently attending many of the Village Planning meetings. There are four public meetings, workshops that the Water Services Department that we are doing ourselves. One of them, we had last week, we have one this week, we have another one next week, and then we're doing an all Spanish version a couple weeks from now to make sure that we're getting, we're trying to get out there as much as we can. We have a video, and we're working on a, another We have a video, and we're working on another video on the Water Services website. There's also a survey that was posted and will be running for the month of February to gather more information about water rates and what we, what our customers feel about that. We did, we are at TII today, and then again, the last one there will be March 17th to the formal meeting. Here's just a few screenshots of some of the social media things that we've put out to advertise this, and we've reached out to the council districts also to share that as they can. Last slide here is just the Water and Rate Advisory Committee, RAC. We met with them on January 21st and discussed the various options, and that group recommended on a six-to-zero vote that option two was the one that they thought was the one that we should move forward with. And I'm going to go off script here a second before I hand it back to Karen. I also wanted to thank staff within the Water Services Department. I've been a short time here in the department, but I want to thank them, and I thank them individually, but I, and at public meetings, I thank them, but I wanted to thank them here with you for all the work that they've done. They've helped me in, to be able to help to lead this department, but more importantly, kind of the work that all staff does, kind of before, during, and I know after the pandemic, the water resource or the Water Services Department does serve a very critical role. So with that, I will slide it back to Denise and Karen. Thank you.
So that is our update, per your request. We did want to come back, and we're happy to answer any additional questions that you have about our process and the options that we're evaluating.
Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you for that. Karen, I had one question for you, or maybe a couple, I'm not sure, we'll see. So I wanted to ask, when you talked about the help that we were giving, that we had, so from the two, what was it, 2 million?
That's correct.
Right? We've used 1.5 million, is that correct?
So as of yesterday, we have distributed approximately 1.2 million out of the 2 million that was allocated by council.
And what's the plan right now to make sure that we get all that money out? And what are some of the challenges, and what can we be helpful with?
Thank you very much for that, Vice Mayor, members of the subcommittee. We have been making about 100 calls a day through our customer service call center to delinquent account holders to make sure that they're, that they know that we're prepared to give them this credit and ask them permission to credit their accounts. So we're working very hard to reach, reach everyone that we, that we believe is in distress. And as I said, over 2,100 customers so far. So what we've done is, again, as I said, shift to an opt-out approach, which is, we call you and say, we are prepared to credit your account, do we have permission, and just say yes or no, and then we are able to immediately apply that credit. And that has allowed us to get the money out much, much more quickly than we were experiencing just the initial weeks of the program. So that change helped significantly. I think that, again, the customer service call center staff are very, very happy to be able to do this, and I again want to express my appreciation to the council, because this is not the call that they ordinarily have to make. When the customer service call center are contacting employees, sometimes it's not good news, and this is an opportunity to bring good news, and we greatly appreciate that.
So is there anything that we could do? Are there, you know, because I'd be curious to know if there's like a significant amount of these, of these folks in District Five, and is there anything that we can do to reach out to folks and say, hey, listen, or do we have? And then the other question is, on these delinquent accounts, do we have accurate numbers for them? And what could we do? I guess I'm just trying to figure out, what can we do so that we can connect, connect them to you guys?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the subcommittee, Councilwoman Guardado. One obstacle we encountered early on was that when we made these calls, people didn't quite believe us. And so outreach to your residents to say, yes, this is real, we really are wanting to assist account holders, so that when they answer the phone, they are more inclined to take the call and say yes. That's, that's one thing certainly that could be helpful. Again, we're not asking people to apply for this assistance, so there's nothing that they, as account holders, need to do. We simply identify them based on financial hardship, objective criteria that we have in, available to us in our customer billing system. So there's nothing that they need to do except take the call. So to the extent that you can assure them that the call is real and that we are absolutely wanting to apply these credits to their accounts, that certainly is something that could be helpful.
So maybe we could just talk offline, and we can figure out those constituents in D5 that maybe we can either pay a visit or just, you know, like send, you know, send them some sort of notification, the city's trying to, answer your phone, the city's trying to get ahold of you, we need you to pick up the phone, so, okay.
Love to do that, thank you, yes.
Okay. Yeah, no, that would be great. Okay, well, thank you, and thanks, thanks so much for, I know that this was something that we've been talking about for a long time, and I'm just, I appreciate the fact that, you know, you and Denise and Jeff and everyone came together and we figured it out and were able to help constituents that have delinquent accounts, and that's, I think that, that is very comforting for many of us that were, that were able to do that, and also appreciate all the work that you guys have done on these water rate increases. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Councilwoman Pastor.
I just wanted to understand, Karen, is that, in my packet, I think it's for information only, at what point, I know there was a slide saying that when we will make a decision as to which option we prefer.
Yes, Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, we very much want to get, as your suggestion, we're surveying the community so that we get data and input regarding the preferences that they, that they have, so we can share that with you, which is why we wanted to step back and not ask you for action today until we had that data to present. So once we have compiled that, and as Eric indicated, that survey should be out in the community for the month of February, we'll compile those, those results and present those to you in early March prior to the hearing on the rates.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for implementing that, because I do think just we need to understand where people's really mindset is at this moment, because it can be all over the place, since we've been in such a lockdown, and so just what their thoughts are. So appreciate it, thank you.
Councilwoman, I think the good news is, we still have the funds. If we do the increase, we will still be able to help people, so keep that in mind.
Yes, you're absolutely right. That is the good news.
Councilwoman Stark, did you want to make any comments?
Just that I appreciate that we're slowing the sound so we can reach out to our residents and businesses. I, there's a lot of confusion on what we're doing, and I think these presentations will be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I was always promoting water, because I get involved through AMWOL, and I also get a text every time there's a breakage in our system, water main. I would tell you, I get one almost every day, and I think every time, how much water are we wasting and losing when that happens? When it's becoming more and more precious to us all the time. And then I saw the article, and I'll ask Karen, did you see the article where there's some very large private firms that want to buy the Colorado River water, and they would be the ones distributing? I just, I mean, I just see that as astronomical increases in water, and we are so dependent, half of our water comes from there. Did you see those articles?
Indeed. Vice Mayor, that is an increasing problem, and competition for more and more scarce resources is going to increase.
No, seems to raise the rate on the water all the times. So I'm very glad that we have been very efficient in storing water for so many years, because there will come a time, and it doesn't look like it will be that far in the future, where we're going to have to rely on other sources. So I really want to thank you, thanks Denise, and the entire Water Department. You have been outstanding. Eric, you are doing a great job, so thank you very much, and I'll wait for you to bring this back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mario, do we go to the downtown transportation plan?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee. Keeney Knutson is coming back to the table to give a presentation along with Chris Kowalski, Deputy Director, on downtown transportation plan. So I'll turn it over to Keeney to give an update on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mario, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, glad to be back to the table right now to talk to you a little bit about our downtown transportation plan update. Some things I wanted to just cover on this, this is actually an update, as I mentioned, to our 2014, 2014 plan that we did and was actually adopted by council. We began this effort to update it in the spring of 2018, and our intent was to be able to have a five-year update to the 2014 plan. Obviously, we're in 2021 now, and we're just bringing and finishing up this plan, and I know Chris is going to give you some of the details about how that went through, but one of the reasons why we're here in 2018 and not sooner, or 2021 and not sooner, is that our downtown has been rapidly changing. Since 2014, when we actually completed the last downtown transportation plan, all the way up until currently, just look around the cranes and the buildings and the construction that's going on in the downtown area. So we wanted to make sure we were able to adapt and incorporate some of that downtown development that was occurring now into the plan, and so that's taken us a little bit longer to get through this update process. But some interesting information I wanted to provide, just a little bit as perspective on our last update in 2014. That effort was mainly focused on projects, so we had a lot of projects that were talked about in that effort, and they were mainly projects that were focused in on what the city can build and what the city can provide for improvements to the downtown transportation system. Some key projects that were part of there, I've listed those there. One of those is rolling under construction right now, and we're actually finishing up that construction here shortly on Third and Fifth Avenues. The Third Street project is actually going to construction in a matter of months. We've actually put that out to bid already, so that's going forward. And another one you might have heard is the Van Buren Street project, which from Seventh Street to 24th Street, which there's been a lot of focus in on that recently, where we just opted not to proceed with the bike lane project in the reduction of lanes on Van Buren in that area, but we are proceeding with a roadway project and a safety and aesthetic improvement project on Van Buren, that same stretch. So because those were more focused on projects with 2014, with our update, we wanted to focus more, less on projects and more on the system operation and improvements we can make to adapt to the changing nature of the downtown area and the development that's going on. And also, we've also looked for ways to be able to coordinate with developers that are coming in there and seek those opportunities, development comes in, for cities to do, the city to do projects, to be able to not just accommodate traffic out there, but also look at multimodal bike and pedestrian projects and enhancements in the downtown area. So I'm going to let Chris Kowalski take over the rest of the presentation here, and we'll be more and happy to answer any questions at the end of this.
Madam Chair, subcommittee members, thank you so much for having me this morning to present on this. As Keeney talked about, we had a lot of change in our downtown area, and so we're wanting to present a little bit here, some positive news, some great findings that we found from our downtown transportation plan update. Real quickly, kind of to give us a little background of how we got here. We know, as Keeney talked about, we've experienced robust growth in our downtown area. We've seen a lot of private development dollars come into downtown with hotels and multifamily projects coming online, as well as business relocates. We've also seen a great commitment from our universities in establishing downtown and bringing that 24-hour, seven-day-a-week growth to downtown with their students. And then we've also seen the public infrastructure with the commitment to light rail and the multimodal effect and the growth that it's brought as well. And so when we're looking at some of these things, the downtown, the impact of this, of this downtown development, as well as the transportation and infrastructure network with the light rail, you know, the question really came to be is, with all this changing network and with all this growth, does the existing infrastructure, the downtown transportation infrastructure, have the ability to withhandle this and sustain this? And so we really set out to answer that question. So the study is bounded by what we call downtown proper. We're all familiar with Seventh Avenue on the west, Seventh Street on the east, I-10 to the north, as well as incorporating the warehouse district on the southern end of One of the key issues, or one of the key components of this study before we started and even began to model it or even look at it, was really get the public's input. We know that this committee asked us to really make sure that we did good notifications, notified all the neighborhood associations within, as well as the surrounding the study area. And so we really wanted to get their input and talk to them. Nobody knows the streets, nobody knows the intersections better than the people who live on them. And so we asked them to provide us some feedback, some information on what intersections may not operate appropriately, maybe some corridors or streets that might be impacted by congestion. And so the response was great. We got over 300 comment cards that really identified hotspots for our consultant to be able to analyze and look at. The study packet that's, the study, the final study that's in your packet was also shared online with our community as well. We went ahead and did specific invites to any neighborhood representative or any neighbor that came to our downtown study meetings, and made sure they got a personal invite, as well as used our social media accounts to really get the word out, to get this study looked at and provide any comments that they want to see. We also performed a web video, understanding and explaining to the community the findings of the study as well, and giving them the opportunity to provide those comments. So as we talked about the growth of downtown, the study really focused on not only the network changes, but also the 104-plus proposed development projects coming in. And so we worked with our Community Economic Development Department on looking at future projects that they're working with, maybe business relocates, as well as work with our, with our Planning and Development Department, long-range staff in terms of zoning projects that are coming in, as well as current projects under construction. Some of the impacts of that growth, really of that 100-plus projects, was we're anticipating 6.5 million square feet of new development in downtown. Some of that projection is 8,500 new dwelling units, and these, these are significant numbers. Working with MEG and socioeconomic data that we receive from them, this equated to a 68% increase in population. We looked at, that equated to almost 34,000 cars, additional trips into the network every day. The other area we wanted to talk about was the network changes that we're seeing. We know right out front, here at City Hall, we're seeing the South Central Light Rail extension under construction. We know we have future planning efforts for the Capital I-10 extension as well. As Keeney talked about, we had the Third and Fifth Avenue project that has been completed as well as the future planning efforts of maybe other multimodal projects such as the Third Street two-way conversion that we wanted to analyze and look at within this study. So Scenario One, we broke the study out into scenarios, and really what Scenario One is, is a baseline of what we have today, and then we add those changes of the light rail, the capital improvement projects. We also look at the growth, right, the trip generation of those 104 projects, and then we take a look at the model itself and see what type of improvements need to be addressed, what type of intersection improvements need to be done in order to mitigate the effect of those, of those changes. And so in Scenario One, we really looked at improved timing throughout the corridor of all of our signals, as well as we identified 15 new traffic signal locations, as well as additional turn lanes at four different intersections, and additional through capacity at two intersections. We know that in that snapshot of that 104 project, it's not static. We know the city continues to grow, it's continuing to have new projects come in. And so one of the things we really wanted to look at under Scenario Two was, is downtown Phoenix open for business? Can we support this continued growth? And so what we really looked at is, we took a sensitivity analysis, and we started adding additional developments into the model. And we added these areas in high-growth areas, such as our Seventh Avenue corridor area, as well as our warehouse district. And we added similar projects that we've been seeing over the last few years to really see what those improvements and mitigations would be needed with those future projects coming online. And so all the inclusions of the Scenario One improvements were all there, the same intersections and so forth, but we also identified six additional traffic signal locations that need to be addressed as well. Here's this Scenario Three, which was really unique. This was, came directly out of This was, came directly out of our public engagement. You know, one of the things that, when we were talking to the community, they really had a concern with multimodal. How do we use this study to really be a jumping-off point or a starting point to have discussions, or future planning discussions for multimodal scenarios? And so what we came up with was opportunity corridors. And so really, those are bicycle or pedestrian improvements that could be implemented into the downtown area. And so what we typically do in this situation is, we looked at adding all that network change, adding those additional growth factors in terms of private development, and then identifying particular streets or corridors that had excess capacity, areas where we could look at doing a multimodal project. And so this information is really vital, because this will be helped feed into our active transportation plan, in really identifying maybe corridors we should start to have those conversations with the community on, and making sure that selections of certain streets and corridors aren't in conflict with the plan. Another area we just want to talk briefly on was the Sunburst Plan. We know the Sunburst Plan basically is the traffic mitigation plan to get people in and out of our entertainment district for the Suns and D-backs games. And so what we did here is, we evaluated a dual-event scenario, and then we added some of the background trips that we assume from developments that will be adjacent or in close proximity to our entertainment partners. And then we went ahead and modeled that and ran that to see what the impacts of that was or were. So from that, we went ahead and had a meeting with the Suns and the D-backs and our entertainment partners, and really showed them the results of that. And where we basically left it with them was, we know during this pandemic, things haven't been typical for our partners. And so as things move ahead and move online, and we start having events back in the downtown area, what we've offered them is to be able to utilize this models, the city's investment in this model, to maybe inform future decisions or future amendments to the Sunburst Plan. As developments come on board and so forth, they can go ahead and use this as a model to determine if there may be mitigations or amendments that could be made to help facilitate that plan. So the study findings were very well, were very good. The internal circulation downtown works very well. We are definitely in a good place in terms of providing the mitigation that was reflected in Scenario 1, to be able to accommodate what we're seeing in the network. We also can see that Phoenix, yes, is open for business. We can continue to be an attractor for private investment dollars and so forth in downtown. We have the ability for the network to increase and handle that additional capacity. And then finally, with those opportunity quarters, you know, this was a great spot where we can work with the community in identifying those specific corridors to have those further discussions and work with them in our future planning documents. And so with that, the next steps really are kind of what Keeney talked about. We're already using these in working with our development community and our zoning process, with our pre-apps and pre-applications, and identifying infrastructure improvements that they can help assist with, putting in signal infrastructure or maybe escrow accounts towards future signalization of intersections that are adjacent to their development. And so this is already paying dividends for us today. We know also this data will be used in informing our future capital improvement program, in making sure that when we identify those dollars, we know the intersections and improvements that need to be placed in order to mitigate the effects of the growth that we're seeing in downtown. And then finally, what we talked about before is, this study, these opportunity corridors will inform those future transportation studies and planning documents with the community. And so with that, Madam Chair and Committee Members, or Commission Members, we're able to take comments. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Oh, I think you're going to get all busy. I don't hear any questions. Thank you for doing this. Yes.
I'm sorry, we do have one member of the public wishing to speak on this item.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Pollan, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Good afternoon. In reading the downtown transportation plan, there's reference in at least one option that states adjustments to on-street parking. The term adjustments is rather vague and suggests the removal of on-street parking. These streets include Moreland Street, First to Seventh Street, which is along the south side of Hans Park, and Second Street, Roosevelt to Fillmore Streets. Parking is already scarce in these business areas. Moreland and Second Streets are some of the more narrow, slowest-speed streets in all of downtown, but each of these streets also have on-street parking that is vital to their immediate areas. There is no reason why these streets cannot continue to maintain their on-street parking and still provide a safe accessway for bicyclists by using the marked shared lane option outlined in the report. The reality is, there will never be more bicyclists traveling on downtown streets than vehicles. Bicyclists will always be a small fractional mode of transportation versus driving. To suggest otherwise is delusional. Staff may have received input from those in a delusional fog, but you certainly did not receive the support about removing on-street parking from the area businesses. If you want people to come downtown and patronize the area's businesses from North Phoenix and elsewhere, where parking is free and plentiful, maintaining easy access, including parking, is imperative. Otherwise, without parking, the many small businesses will close, not to mention that the reduction in on-street parking means a reduction in city revenue. Where is the parking study that is supposed to be in the works? Any thought about removing parking without the parking study is premature. Based upon these facts, I respectfully request that any option that includes removing any on-street parking in these two areas be removed from consideration. Thank you.
Would either of you like to comment on that, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commission Members, certainly, one of the considerations with the opportunity corridors was taking a look at it from a level of service. We wanted to make sure that those corridors that were selected were corridors that had that excess capacity. One of the caveats that we made sure we did with our, when working with our community, is making sure we didn't affect the streetscape zones and sidewalks areas. We had heard through a lot of our public outreach and comments, and especially with our downtown shade, downtown master shade plan, making sure that those areas were protected. And so certainly, in certain areas and certain corridors that were looked at, the removal of parking spaces was deemed to be more of a, lesser of an extent than moving any type of mitigation into our shade and sidewalks and streetscape zones. Now, in terms of looking at this study itself, by no means does this provide that these corridors are the ones that are going to be enhanced, or the ones that will have any type of modification to them. What it simply did was, it just gave the ability to work on those future planning efforts, on those community efforts, in terms of what corridors could potentially be looked at and evaluated for a multimodal condition.
Thank you. Anyone, any members have any questions, comments? Karen, I thank you very much for the report, and look forward to you coming back another time and getting it selected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may suggest that for Item 14, which is a planned presentation for the eScooter Pilot Program, since we're right at noon, that I would suggest that we not do the presentation. The information on that item is contained in the report. I do know that we have a couple of speakers, though, so I would turn it over to you, Madam Chair, to see what you would like to do on this item.
I'm more than willing, but I think we need to hear the speakers, because maybe the staff couldn't respond when they do the presentation. Do we still have the speakers on the phone?
Chairwoman, yes, I believe we do. Our first speaker is Fong Bu.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide public comment today. My name is Fong Bu, and I'm representing Spin, one of the shared electric scooter operators in Phoenix. Spin is a subsidiary of Ford Motor Company, and we've been in regular communication with city staff, and continue to refine our model to meet the needs of Phoenix and deliver on our shared vision around safety, responsiveness, and equitable service. And to that end, we're committed to expanding economic opportunities in Phoenix by employing a team of all in-house benefited W-2 field operations team members. Spin is grateful for the opportunity to continue serving the city of Phoenix during both the first and second phases of the pilot. We started operating in September 2019, and after two vendors seized operation shortly after launching, Spin was the only eScooter provider in the city and was awarded the largest fleet. We are also committed to working with local stakeholders to expand equitable mobility access and maximize safety. Our community partnerships team has been working with local organizations, such as the Phoenix Community Alliance, the Downtown Phoenix Partnership, the Arizona Center, Downtown Phoenix Farmers Market, as well as the Community Food Connections, to share information about Spin Access, our discounted access program, help constituents register, as well as promote educational content around safe riding and parking. As the city consider the next phase of the electric scooter program in Phoenix, we urge you to consider a selective and competitive RFP process, selecting up to two qualified vendors with a strong record of compliance and a history of operating in the city. Thank you again for your consideration, and we look forward to working with the city on the next phase of the program.
And our next speaker is Brandon Chung.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can.
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair and Councilmembers. My name is Brandon Chung, and I work on the Government Relations Team here at Razor, the other operator, dockless scooter operator in the city. I thank you very much for the opportunity to briefly address you regarding this item. Since launching our Dockless Shared Scooter Service in Phoenix late last year, just four months ago, Razor has proudly served thousands of unique riders with nearly 10,000 rides. This amounts to thousands of miles of travel within the city of Phoenix through an affordable, sustainable, and non-emitting means of transportation. Along with our fellow operator, Spin, with whom we share an open and productive working relationship, Razor has remained committed to ensuring that our devices are used safely and responsibly. To that end, Razor has and will continue to double down on our rider education efforts in our app, through our social media and customer contact channels, and through our virtual and in-person community engagement events. Our team has also worked with city staff over the past months to modify our operations, including the modification of scooter staging in response to feedback that we have received from the Street Transportation Department and various other community stakeholders. I'd also add that in March 2020, Razor introduced a set of industry-leading sanitation protocols in response to the COVID-19 pandemic to ensure that we continue to serve our employees and our customers safely and responsibly. In practice, this means that almost all of our scooters are sanitized daily. These protocols were implemented across all of our shared scooter markets and will remain in place for the foreseeable future. And now more than ever, Phoenix residents and visitors need a safe and affordable means of getting around, and Razor is proud to have maintained its Dockless Shared Scooter Service, which we believe has become an integral part of Phoenix's public transit infrastructure throughout the COVID-19 crisis. We look forward to continuing to serve the Phoenix community and to answering any questions or addressing any outstanding concerns that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling. Mario, can we make sure that this is the first item at our next meeting?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. We would be happy to bring it back for presentation on the next meeting.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Councilwoman Pastor. I know that there's no action, but I just want to say something about this. Last week, I was doing a filming on Roosevelt, and as I was doing a, as we were wrapping up, I see two young ladies jump onto a scooter, probably 200 feet away from me, jump on a scooter, maybe five, and got to 200. And all of a sudden, one of the girls fell off the scooter and hit, literally hit themselves on the head. We stopped everything, went over. She got up, she said she was fine. Her friend was giggling, got back on the scooter. I thought it was, definitely was impairment, and wasn't safe for her to be on it. We tried to get her, convince her to...
We'll call you back.
Tried to convince her to not ride it, but she continued. We ended up calling the police, because it was just getting dangerous, and then now they're on Central. And I went to the establishment to let them know that two young ladies at 21 that were impaired got into a scooter and could be possibly arrested. So I know that's not the scooter company's issue, but that's, those are the things that I think we need to look at. They also were on the sidewalk, and I said, there's a policy, you need to get on the bike lane. But those are the, this is just me being cautious. I guess I'm a mother.
May I understand, were they both on the same scooter?
No, they weren't.
Okay. Thank you.
But I just think we have to be diligent about, I guess, reporting.
And educating. Good point.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I think that's the end of today's agenda for now, so I will close this meeting. Thank you all for your participation. Bye.